And we'll open the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, April 20th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We have all board members attending tonight in person. We have Alicia Hayes, Gordon Leifer, Laura Aurora, Maya Rabasa, and myself, Judy Newman. Let's start, please join me in the flag salute.
...of America, into the Republic which extends one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now I will read the line of acknowledgement. The school board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homeland of the Calipulia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 through 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Calipulia were moved to the Grand Rod Reservation, and some were moved to the Select Reservation. It's important to note that all of Lane County has an important trading and gathering area for canvas and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area of the Confederate tribes of Pous, Lower Anquah, and Soyouslaw Indians, the Confederate tribes of Grand Rod Indians, the Confederate tribes of Selects Indians, the Kow- Kowal Indian tribe, and the Cow Creek Van Anquah Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all of the members of our school district community. Thank you. So, we're going to take a look at our agenda tonight. Everyone, take a look. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda? Uh, Laurel?
Um, I can't see if everything is all set and updated right now. I would like to move up our selection on the agenda for first round. So they can go.
Do you have a second for that?
I would second that by putting it right after the consent group is our objective or I don't know.
I can't see anything right now, so I would defer to what you can see.
Any, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any conversation? So you want to put it on the agenda before items for information?
Yeah, sounds great.
Any discussion on that? Alicia?
I'm just curious why leadership put it where it was.
That's a good question. I can answer that. We did talk about it. We do have items we have to get through tonight and...
I've got leadership, hasn't it?
Yeah, we did talk about the order of the agenda at leadership.
Oh, it's in there and it happened. Things are put in there and but also that was...
Well, we did, we discussed it at leadership when we put it there because we have to get to the other items. So if we move it earlier on the agenda, we can't cut the other items out of the agenda. They're time sensitive things that have to be done too.
Are you saying this can be cut?
No, no. We're not cutting anything.
So we can cut it. No, I know, I did have to be cut. You're gonna go, alright. You asked me a question and I gave you a...
I asked you a question. Thank you for answering.
Yeah.
So...
I would, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion?
I just want to clarify then. This would just be rearranging, not eliminating. Is that right?
Yeah, no, I just want to move it up. I just like to, I like that golden rule that if I was waiting for a while, I don't want to wait for hours, I'd rather wait at least enough time.
Any other comments or about this? Alicia?
I think it's gonna be a long meeting, so either we're gonna have staff waiting as well, and I'm gonna hurry what staff goes, so I'm, that's why I asked you why you guys set it up that way. Thanks.
Okay, it was, it's the usual order of our agenda. We just thought that would give us as much time as it took us at the end of the night to finish it, but as long as we can get through everything, I will just call it off and see who wants to change it.
I guess I would, just one tiny comment, like, I would rather have more alertness and brain power for this, not to say that I'm not paying attention during the items for information, but it kind of requires less deliberation of us, so that's, that's what would make sense to me.
Yes.
I, I, I think, I've seen you do this at other times, so I feel like there's some kind of ulterior motive for not moving it up, which seems strange because it seems to be kind to the people that are waiting who are not paid.
Okay.
Other people are.
It is nothing deliberate. We talked about it, leadership, and I, that is, I don't know what it would be, Laurel, but let's just call the vote.
Can we vote? Can we vote?
Yeah. All those in favor of moving it up on the agenda, raise your hand. Okay, if that says four, all those that do not want to move it, raise your hand. If that says four votes, yes, and one vote no. Okay. So now we have comments from superintendent, Superintendent Banacar. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Newman and board members. Before I share about 4J's ongoing work for mental health support, I want to make sure the board and community know that I care a great deal about mental health and suicide prevention education. I want to acknowledge the feedback from a board member about the last regular board meeting when this topic was discussed. On occasion, staff and board members used texting to communicate with me about some kind of issue with the board meeting, and I did look down at my phone. It was never my intent to disrespect a board member or Aurora, and I want to apologize that my actions, both looking at my phone and a brief, a brief change in my expression, took away from her message about suicide prevention. I'm sorry, Laurel. In the next month, 4J will begin a community mental health committee. There will be information shared on the website, Facebook, and other media detailing the specifics for attending. To begin, staff will lead attendees through 4J's prevention plan and share resources we currently use to support students, families, and staff. My hope is we can share our process for responding to mental health concerns and receive feedback on ways in which we can improve our response. Before this meeting, we met a number of community members who are interested in becoming a board member. 4J received 38 applications, and I'd like to say thank you to each of you for expressing your interest and hope those who are not selected continue to stay invested in the district. As I look out, I realize it is very nice to see people in person at this meeting. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, superintendent. The next thing, our comments from board chair, so that's me. It's really nice to be here tonight in person with everyone. It's been a month since we've had a regular board meeting, and I wanted to just welcome everyone to the meeting tonight and also just thank the, guess we had 37 or 36, we ended up with applicant, well, we had 38 applicants, which is very overwhelming for the school board, an amazing, an amazing candidate pool. I was very impressed. I'm always really overwhelmed by the interest and support of our community that they show for our schools and for education, and I just want to thank you all for being here. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we have 24,000 children living in Lane County, and one in three of those children have experienced some sort of abuse or neglect in their lives. We know that child abuse is prevented when kids are connected and families are supported and community members can take positive action. My hope is that each one of us can find ways to be part of this solution, not just this month, but every month of the year, and that's how we can really make a difference. One of the most important and cherished privileges is free, is our freedoms, and it's our opportunity, you know, during this kind of year, because it's Passover holiday, and it's a holiday that I observed, I reflect on how grateful I am for the freedoms I'm so fortunate to experience each day, living here in this country in 2022. One of the most important and cherished privileges of freedom is the opportunity and responsibility to access a free and public education. I see, I say that responsibility because in order to keep and protect our freedoms, it's important to have an educated and informed electorate. I recently had dinner with a woman from the Ukraine, and she talked about her mother, sister, and niece who are recently fled to Poland for safety, which is where they're staying. She shared that her niece is continuing to go to school online with her classmates and teacher each day. She talked about how this familiar and important aspect of her niece's life was such a comfort and was so centering for her and her family in this very traumatic and tumultuous times. It's amazing and heartwarming that the teachers and schools are keeping regular contact with their students and keeping up their studies. It's really, truly heroic. As we know, schools have such a critically important role in the lives of our children and our community. Our youth school district employees are our heroes. I'm sincerely and deeply grateful to every person who works in our schools and makes them welcoming and engaging places for learning, discovery, and social supports. I mean, every person, those who feed students and transport students, those who keep our buildings and grounds clean and in good repair, those who provide great leadership and infrastructure, and to those who keep our schools running behind the scenes with the infrastructure and to teach and support our students, and to my fellow board members and for their commitment and passion for the many, many hours they've been spending on our very many pressing tasks, so thank you. It's an honor to be part of this community. So now we get to hear from students, and I think we have Taryn up first.
Hello.
Yes.
Hi. Good to see you. So, we have a talent show tomorrow that ASB has been prepping. Very excited about that. And then we have a Highlander Pageant, which is where our Highlanders are raising money. I'm actually at an event for them right now. Our Highlanders are raising money for Save the Babies, I believe. Yeah, so right now we're choreographing a dance, and there's gonna be a talent show, and yeah, a bunch of cool stuff for that. And then we have our Spring Musical, which is Midsummer's Night, Midsummer Night's Dream, and that one's gonna be like a musical rather than just the play, which is cool. And then we're still in Spring Sports, they're well underway, going great, baseball, softball, track, and tennis. And our dance team placed third place, our highest score ever in the history of North Eugene. Yeah, seven years ago, we placed fourth place, which was crazy in itself, but it's amazing. So, we also have, Eco Club was promoting Earth Week, and they had a poster making day on Saturday. And then we have our GSA, which is planning a pride event soon. We'll have more on that soon. And then Jim Garcia came and he told stories for social justice. That was really incredible hearing from him and just what we can do to be better humans. And then prom planning is still going well. Not sure on the theme yet, but we'll update. And then we have, a teacher wrote an EEF grant, and it's, the funding is funding a visit by A.S. King, an author who is gonna have a meet and greet with a small group of our students and a writing session. And then our prom dress drive was very, very successful. And that's everything.
And do we have any other students? I think we have Noah, right? Yeah, there she is.
Oh, sorry, isn't my turn?
I had Noah next, but you could go to sleep.
Oh, no, you're totally good. You can go, Noah. Either way, I'll go. Okay, so we just had our prom two weeks ago at South, and it was a huge success. It was Hollywood themed, and I went, and it was very fun to be able to go to a prom my senior year, so I was very grateful for that, and I think everyone was very grateful that we had an in-person prom. Last week, we had our Spring Fest, which is an annual event that we host in order to help foster club engagement at South, and so we just invite all the clubs to have a booth, and students are able to go and learn more about the clubs. And that was really important to us because one of our big goals in student government this year was just to foster more, a better relationship between student government and clubs, so having events like Spring Fest is really important for that. And then this week is Green Week at South, which we are hosting in honor of Earth Day, but it's a week-long event, and we have many different goals throughout the week with the goal of, or activities with the goal of promoting eco-friendly practices, and students who participate in different activities, such as we had a litter pickup, a secondhand clothing swap, and then a walk or bike to school day, and the students that participate in these activities get a raffle ticket that will be entered to win a basket of sustainably-made products. And sort of adding on to this, protecting the environment and adopting climate-conscious practices is something that's really important to the students at South, and it is a common demand or common thing that students really want, to be able to see more changes made around South, to adopt more practices that will help keep our environment and climate safe and protect our climate. And so we're really hoping that in the near future, we'll be able to see some changes throughout the district and at South that will help reduce waste and emissions from our school. Currently, South Eugene Theater is putting on a comedy called The Real Inspector Hound, and it opens Friday, the 22nd, on the South Eugene main stage, and performances are the next two Fridays and Saturday nights at 7:00 with Sunday matinees at 2:00, and tickets are available online. And then on April 27th, South is hosting a workshop for BIPOC and affinity group students, and the workshop is hosted by retired educator Jim Garcia, and it intends to build capacity for students to participate in transformational ways towards diversity and equity initiatives. And another concern around South right now that has been tragically prevalent is mental health of students. It often feels like the efforts that come to address mental health come in light or after different tragedies have taken place, and we think that it would be really important to start seeing these efforts made a lot earlier before these things, before the extremes are reached. And it's also really important that these resources aren't just made available but brought directly to the students, because a lot of students aren't gonna take the initiative to go seek out different resources that are provided at our school, so we think that it'd be really important for these resources to be brought directly to the students. And obviously, we're appreciative for the efforts that have been in place, but obviously a lot more is necessary, and we think that things need to be more constant so that tragedies don't keep occurring in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Noah. Okay, Selene, your turn.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Ms. Selene. It's nice to see you guys again. So we've been doing a lot recently, especially with prom, so our prom is planned for May 7th, from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM, the Wheeler Pavilion, and it's gonna be Starry Night, and so we're, we are just selling tickets for that and doing our nominations for royalty. Our clubs and unions and ASB have been planning for Mental Health Awareness Month, so we're gonna be doing things during lunch just to kind of, you know, bring awareness to that, and we're gonna be doing like fun activities. We did just have our Club Bear as well, so that was really helpful to get that started. It went really well. We had it in the gym because of the rain, but it went really well, and everyone had a good time, and the band was playing music. We also recently put up flags to represent our diversity at Churchill, and so there are flags all around our building now. That was pretty cool. And our Climate Action Club actually did something for advisory today, and they've been planning for our Earth Week, our like Earth Spirit Week, so we had Monday, which was Eat Less Meat, and then Tuesday, which was, we call it like trashy Tuesdays, pickups like your trash, pick up garbage that you see, and then today we had Wear Green, and tomorrow we'll have like an all-thrifted outfit, and then so on. Our GSA, which is our Gender Sexuality Alliance Club, is doing, will be participating in the Day of Silence on Friday, and so I think a lot of students will be participating in that. And then we will also have Jim Garcia coming, April 29th, which is Friday, he'll be coming from 9:00 to 12:00, I think, 12:00 PM, and so we'll be doing a workshop with him. I guess that's really all I have for our updates right now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have any other students? Okay, great. Then it's, we're gonna move on to editors by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their requests online at 4j.lane.edu/board-publiccomment or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left and then when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticisms about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7706 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. We have four speakers tonight. We have three on Zoom, I think they're going first, and we have one in person. So the first speaker is Larry Lewin.
I'm Larry Lewin, retired 4J teacher, now member of CAPE. Thank you, board members, for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for your work earlier this evening, interviewing the many candidates to replace the empty seats. Standardized testing season is beginning again. After two years of break due to the pandemic, we are unfortunately back to normal with testing. I know that the Smarter Balance Summit of spring tests required by the state of Oregon because they were required by the Federal Department of Education, caused by the No Child Left Behind Act passed 20 years ago. 4J must administer these tests, I know that. But we have a way, actually two ways, to minimize the impact of these tests on our students. The criticisms of these standardized tests have been voiced repeatedly over the years, so I don't need to review why I oppose their use, their overuse compared to other academic assessment measures. The first way to reduce these tests is for local school districts like 4J to publicly acknowledge the detriments and commit to replacing these standardized tests with better assessments. If this board told our community and the rest of the state that you oppose these tests, that message would be a powerful change agent. A second way to reduce the dominance of these standardized tests is the national opt-out movement. Parent movement across the country seeks to undermine the clout of these standardized tests by withdrawing their children from taking them. Oregon expanded the parent right to, with the Student Assessment Bill of Rights Law passed back in 2015, which allows parents to opt their kids out of these tests for any reason. This board can advise district parents of this right and can make the state opt-out forms very easily accessible to parents who want to use them. For years, I urged 4J to put a link on our district's homepage with one-click link to the form. Some progress was made last month, but it gets buried over time and less easily found by parents. Placing and keeping it right on the homepage is doable if this board wants. Likewise, I could not find the testing days on any website of the five 4J schools I looked at. The testing dates weren't listed for parents. I had to phone the schools to find out if the testing dates have been set building by building. Why not help the schools, help the parents to find the rightful means to decide what is best for their own kids? And are all students, are all schools emailing the forms to parents or placing them on the counter of the school office? I don't know. I know 4J is following the letter of the opt-out law, but I urge you to also follow the spirit by removing the barriers to parents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have is Roscoe Karen.
Good evening. My name is Roscoe Karen. I'm a retired 4J middle school teacher and also a member of CAPE. Board members, thank you for the hours and hours and hours you devote to your position. HB 2655, Oregon's opt-out law passed in 2015. From the beginning, there were efforts across the state, from the ODE to numerous districts, including 4J, to dissuade parents from exercising their rights. Reported actions we know of between 2015 and 2019 include a 4J superintendent quoted in the Register Guard saying that parents who opt out are lowering test scores and their neighbor's property values. Another superintendent stating publicly that parents who opt out are harming students of color. Parents told by building administrators that opting out harmed students and the district. Parents being told that their student would be ineligible for tag identification. Students opting out, being placed in libraries and cafeterias with nothing to do for hours a day for days at a time. Teachers forbidden from providing any information to parents about their legal rights to opt out, even when parents asked. Obscure access on the 4J website to opt-out forms placed on a webpage extolling the benefits of Sback to dissuade parents from opting out. Administrators commenting in community forums and PTO meetings about the value of Sback while teachers were told that they must remain neutral under, often understated but still clear threat of sanction. Board members, the willful obstruction of people exercising their legal rights, whether the right to vote or the right to opt out, is deeply unethical. There is no justification for such obstruction. An ethical course of action by 4J in obeying the letter and spirit of HB 2655, the Student Assessment Bill of Rights would include, provide simple and easy access on the 4J website to opt-out information and forms. Objective information about Sback. If the district makes the case for Sback on the webpage with the opt-out forms, it should be balanced with reasons why parents choose to opt out. No administrators allowed to intimidate or discourage opting out, period. All schools provide an educationally sound experience for students who are opting out. No teachers threatened for providing objective information to parents or students about their legal right to opt out. No students prevented from qualifying for tag identification due to opting out. If past is prologue, we cannot simply assume that 4J administrators will not try to tamp down opting out. I hope no district staff will no longer do that. That said, it's up to you, 4J board, to declare in no uncertain terms that interfering with parent and student legal rights will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person is Miriam Ormini Sugar.
She's not present.
She's not present, okay. Then we'll go to Bonnie Sano.
Not present on Zoom, suspect in person.
Yes. So we move on, we don't wait, okay. Then we are done with public comment. So it is time for comments by employee groups. I think we had EEA here, Sabrina? So it is time for comments by employee groups. I think we had E E A here. Sabrina? Is that gonna be you?
Yeah. Thanks, Judy. Um, good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Vanderkar. My name is Sabrina Gordon and I am president of the Jane Education Association. I want to start my comments by thanking the board for all the time you are spending to make thoughtful decisions that will have long term impacts on our district and the students we serve. The entire four J community is counting on you to determine the path that we will walk together for the next several years. No pressure. Meanwhile, as you are up to your elbows in simultaneous selection processes for school board members and the permanent superintendent, the educator workforce crisis continues. Often wrongly referred to as educator burnout, either by E E A or here this year, what educators continue to experience is better described as demoralization. Educators are demoralized because they are working day in and day out with circumstances that set them up for failure. These systems include schedules that don't sufficiently support planning and collaboration time or relationship building time with students. Inadequate staffing to support the emotional and behavioral health of students and disjointed systems for addressing persistent equity issues. These problems were not created by the COVID pandemic. They predated by years, even decades. In order to keep educators from giving up, which is happening across the country as more of us make the difficult decision to leave the profession, we need to find solutions in four J that will outlast the pandemic. Lasting solutions can only be created by including the voices of educators and students who have experienced these difficulties. What I'm describing sounds overwhelming, I know. It is overwhelming for educators and students every day. I'm not asking you to solve these problems overnight. But I bring these back to your attention in this moment because of the opportunities that lay in front of you right now. Students need you, the school board, to understand these issues at a deep level. You have an opportunity at your fingertips to strengthen your collective understanding of problems and potential solutions by selecting board members who will connect you more closely to the educators and students of four J. How fortunate we are to have so many community members willing to serve on the school board. As you consider each applicant, I urge you to ask yourselves how their experience and roles in the community will strengthen the board's ability to understand and address the educator workforce crisis and bring four J to a brighter future. Our students are counting on you and there is no time to waste.
Thank you, Sabrina. Um, I don't think we have any, yeah, either, either of the other project groups to testify, correct? Then it's time for board comments. Uh, who would like to go first? Alicia?
Um, first, I'd like to just let everybody know that I think the earliest a school board member of practice week last night was one third. Everybody fell in line after that, we haven't long protected me. Just saying that because, you know, I'm a little tired or maybe I'm just projecting. I want to thank all of the folks who applied and came and shared with us today. When I told people how many folks applied, they were surprised and then surprised that we were going to listen and wondered, you know, how that was gonna be after a long night. And I have to say, just hearing everybody and everybody's perspective and everybody's thoughts was so, it was actually energizing. I'm tired now. I wasn't listening, uh, listening to folks because of all the passion um uh they brought to this. Um, what I've been doing is I'm getting ready for the charter school reviews. I'm on charter school committee and that is coming out for learning more about what that means and getting that in my calendar. And I'm also um, uh, I guess I was the um backup to Mary on Hell Club for the last four years. And no, I uh, and I guess there's a meeting this week and I missed one. Uh, but anyway, I, I am getting that on my calendar. Um, so I, I will report on um when I can attend the next meeting.
Can that's everything going on?
Yes.
Who would like to go next? Maya?
Uh, I, I also want to start by saying thank you to the applicants. I um, I have a friend who serves on a school board in New York State who couldn't believe that we had as many applicants as we do and to find that um everybody was incredibly captivating and offers some really unique um um skill sets and insights that I think we, we have a delightfully difficult task ahead of us. Um, it's, it's a nice problem to have instead of the other way around of having to chase people down. So thank you and thank you for your passion and for demonstrating to our students that what it means to be a civically minded and civically active member of our community. I also want to say thank you to the students for um recording tonight. It's been a while since we've seen your faces. I hope that spring break treated you well. Um, I, I really appreciate the reporting, but I also appreciate the advocating as well. And in particular, though, I want to just make it clear that I really hear your words and they resonate with me and I support the call for um proactive measures um fully. So thank you for bringing that back to our attention and making sure that it doesn't drift away at all. And I assure you that it's not. Um, and, and it seems it's in order to say thank you to Jim Garcia, who is apparently making a tour of four J high schools. And um, I'm hoping to maybe see if I can um find my way into one of those sessions perhaps or at least get a one on one recap of what's been going on. Um, personally, I attended the National School Board Association Annual Conference earlier this month and I'm gonna take some time next meeting perhaps to share a little bit more. It was, it was unexpectedly inspiring. There were thousands of school board members there from across the country. And um, there's one session that I attended in particular that I, I pulled my phone out to videotape the speaker because he was so just mag, like magnetic and just had me on the edge of my seat. And that was a session that was called, that was called Reinventing Education, Making Change Fun. And I, I'm looking forward to sharing some of what he, what he um offered us. The last thing I'm gonna talk about is appreciation for Larry and Roscoe's um tireless advocacy on the part of opting out and really looking critically at our testing practices. Um, I hope I look like I wasn't paying attention, but I did quickly pull up the two school districts in Eugene, four J and Bethel. And they both take two clicks to get to the opt out form, which is fine. Unfortunately, four J, it took me a while to even realize what the hyperlink was. So it would be worthwhile for us to make that a little bit more clear. And even when it's in testing season time, a button on the homepage is ideal. And I looked at Bethel's and it's also two click, but check it out. They have the English opt out form, Chinese, Korean, Japanese, French, Tagalog, Spanish, Chinese. The ones traditional by symbol led Vietnamese, Russian, German and Arabic. All with very clear hyperlinks. And I, I'm hoping that maybe we can not have to reinvent the wheel, but reach out with our gracious neighbor, to our gracious neighbors and and, and, and ask if we can, if we can um take advantage of being members of the same community that students that are often share and, and do something similar. Because that feels um just really, really welcoming and really accessible to a whole lot of our community that we're currently not offering even remotely comparable um access to opt out information in forms. So that's where I'll leave it and look forward to our conversation about all the activities today.
Thanks. Who's next?
Gordon. Thanks. Um, like everybody else, maybe I have the fever. Uh, I want to thank everybody who applied to join the board. Um, obviously, it's not just great news. Partly, it's a sign of how many people have encountered problems that were serious enough to make them want to step up and do this. But it's also a willingness and commitment to try to dig in and make some of that better. So I'm grateful for that. And as Superintendent Vanderkar said, I hope that anybody who does not end up on the board who applied remains involved. There are a lot of very concrete, specific issues that require focused attention, including from parents and community members. For instance, I think what the answer is to bullying is not simple or clear and we need people who have experience of that and have thought about that to be part of that process. So I hope that even people who don't end up as board members will find ways to be part of focusing on particular issues and helping us that way. There are a couple of specific issues that I want to just say a quick thing about. One is about librarians and the proposal to have for us to launch next year a five year pilot program where we equip librarians in three Title I elementary schools chosen by the district. We have zero library certified librarians now in elementary, middle school. And there's uh, we've talked about this a long time. We said we want to do research based decisions. There's a ton of research behind this. There's a lot of ways to evaluate it. And what we're talking about is we have a five year pilot program where we have three uh, we have three elementary schools that have full time librarians in a I have asked uh to get um from the, from the district budget office recommendations for the ways that would be easiest to pay for this and least disruptive to other district operations. I believe that we can pay for the first two years out of S R funds. I haven't gotten a response on the other thing. I don't necessarily need to be somebody who says, here's where the money should come from. But, but I want to be clear that basically this for this money would not be comfortable voting to put forward a budget that didn't include this. And the second thing I want to talk about briefly is mental health, which I know everybody in this room and in town probably feels the same uh sadness and horror and urgency. And what I wanted to raise is that I think, you know, we spent a lot of time every place among ourselves with candidates um talking about having more social workers, having more counselors, having more psychologists. And that's kind of like to stop the immediate problem or to help people after something uh bad happens, as, as one of the student representatives said. And that's critical. And I personally don't know exactly what we should get, but I believe we should get more of those. But I think we also need to look and see if there are things that we can change in the ways our schools function that could reduce anxiety and depression among particularly among the middle school and high school uh students. And so there's a couple of things I want to raise. One is I think we have to look at reducing the amount of time spent on testing, which I think everybody here is committed to, um, but we haven't done. And you know, partly we're all absorbed in the COVID crisis for the last two years. The issue of having a one click link on the district homepage, I and other people have been asking about for years. I, I don't know why we don't have that. This is, you know, one of the things we could do to reduce anxiety and stress is to make it easy for parents who choose to reduce the stress on their own kids by opting them out of some of the tests. Other districts have done it. It's, you know, we should be able to do it tomorrow as far as I could see. And I would like to see a written policy along the lines of what I think Roscoe Karen mentioned, which is basically not having any barriers or, or even hints of punitive sanctions for teachers who respond to parents' questions about their right to opt kids out. Um, in addition, in terms of mental health, here are things I'm not sure about, but I would like us to at least look at, not right now, but next year. Uh, one is changing the schedule for high school and moving it back, maybe just starting ten A M., which I know is very complicated and there's a lot of things that, you know, everything depends on everything else plus schedules after school. So I don't want to pretend that it's easy, but there's a lot of, uh, I think the research is pretty clear about why teenagers have the sleep cycles they do. And if we could adjust that, um, I think that would be good. I would also like to look, I've heard discretion and I'm interested in a proposal uh in high school that would get cut, excuse me, cut each class period by five minutes and then provide a one hour lunch instead of a half hour lunch. On this too, I know that there's issues of a certain minimum number of instructional minutes we need to have in a year. I don't know, you know, could we do it every day of the week? Could we do it some days of the week? I believe that it would be good for um for students to have just that kind of break from pressure. I think it would create more time for students like before and after class to connect with teachers or whoever the parents are, sorry, the parents, the adults are who are their, you know, their go to people, like we've all said, we hope there are for everybody. And for teachers, I maybe half an hour of that becomes planning time that otherwise is not there. And finally, and I say this as one thing that I'm, I'm really not sure about and I know there's a danger of um sounding like the old guy complaining about how the electric guitar ruined music and TV rocks kids minds. But I would like to consider having the lunch period be free of digital devices, obviously with exceptions for kids who for whatever reason used to be in touch with their family during that time to encourage more face to face reaction, interaction. Again, I could be wrong. Um, but I know that anxiety and depression and self harm have all risen dramatically since 2010, which was the financial crisis and other things, but also the introduction of smartphones. So I'm not sure this is right, but when we think about one of the things that are under our control and especially things under our control that don't cost money, I think I really want us to look at, are there things we can change in our practice in school that could mitigate the anxiety and depression? Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Laura?
Um, I haven't written anything. I've been doing other things. The, the, the biggest thing I wanted to talk about and it won't come. Should I turn on the microphone? The device is in my quarters. So the biggest thing I want to talk about is I am getting more and more staff um classified and professional staff connecting to me um asking for help, just saying things are bad and seeing in what we're doing as a board, which is exciting, but also I'm one person on a board and make sure right away to tell them that I, I will, because the work I do every day is to help people problem solve and overcome barriers. But I can't, I, this isn't my work alone, of course. Um, the concern is, is that it's, while it's gratifying that it's um more and more people are trusting to connect with me and know that I'm not going to, I don't, I don't spread names. I don't talk to other people about this. Um, it's, it's concerning in the extreme to realize how many staff. And this really, I had no idea you were gonna talk about this. Um, this really connects oh well, and I hope people go back and listen to what Sabrina said earlier. Um, the thing I want to say, this is, when we talk about staff, a lot of people stop at our professional educators. And while they're very important, of course, we couldn't exist without them. We have, everybody is essential that works for us um at four J. And we have a lot of staff, especially in our classified staff, who absolutely feel like they're garbage. And it just makes, it's just tragic. Because yeah, we've just sat through interviews from all these different um the, first of all, thanks for all the interviews that were here, but we also sat through interviews for superintendents and people from all over. And the exciting ideas that they have and how excited they are about um school districts inception, what they want to brand. Of course, it's an interview, so it's, it's, it's the archetype of what, you know, a school district can be. But it does get you excited. It makes you think. It gets your juices going. You're like, what could we be? We are failing. We are getting, our report card is not good for our staff. And when we talk about we can't get people and the people we can get are, you know, there's just, there's nobody exists. We have a reputation. We're not getting people for many reasons. And one of them is because people are leaving. I have, can I tell you the amount of people that say to me, I don't care. I have to go. So people are taking care of their mental health, but at their own detriment in some ways, I think. They're saving themselves, but, but they're also, they're also saying in the same breath how much they love these kids and they love the people they work with and how many people, and how many people are also suffering. I I feel like we're in a situation in four J where this will not be heard. It will not, anything, nothing will change. And I find that a tragedy. I feel like the culture of where we are is just, that's it. There's nothing else. I would like to see when, like I looked at the consent agenda, it looked like we had um was it four resignations, five? I can't remember. It's not in front. I have to go hop through several screens to find it. Um, several resignations, um, and maybe retirements. I'm tired. Um, retirements, I understand. When I have that many resignations, I would love to When I have that many resignations, I would love to, I, I think the board, we need to develop a policy for understanding why our people are leaving. I think we should have some kind of review process and also open something up where staff can come to us before they feel all hope is lost. I don't want to, I also am very mindful of being somebody who has supervised staff. You don't want to, you don't want to take too much power away from your administrators. So this needs to be done really well, but I think it can be done, working with our unions, working with educators and classified staff who have, I know they have ideas because I keep hearing them and they sound exciting. I, it's a, just, it goes back to the fact that our communication is dismal here. Our transparency is dismal. And it, we are, we are losing people not for the right reasons. I know I brought up pastime that my son had an amazing tutor at South, an amazing tutor at South that just helped him with, I know that wasn't his official title, but he was so good at what he did, but they, they were so good at what they did. And I, and I haven't asked permission to talk about this, and they said it's fine. And they didn't care, but I'm not going to say any names. I'm going to say, the reason they were let go is they were given an ultimatum, and they said they couldn't do it, and they were told, you can resign or you could go. That is not the culture we, that keeps amazing educators. That is not the culture. So I think we have a lot of work to do. I am ready to do it. I really would like to see us work on policies specifically around this and then work on more, I think we need extensive major policy. I think it can be done in a way that does not take away from administrators in the schools who are doing great work, but it can also be a fail-safe for educators who feel like they have no other place to go. And they're stuck, and they, they, they are like, the only way to save myself is to leave. And there's too many people talking to me about this. I, I, you know, when it's just, you know, four or five, you're like, what? Is there a coincidence? But now, I'm, this is pretty much every week, new people are asking to reach out to me. And I would talk to them every single time because that's how I know what's going on because I do not get communicated with by the admin here. So I would really appreciate, anybody who wants to reach out to me that works for 4J, please continue to do so, and our other board members that you trust. I think we all care about keeping good staff here, and I think we can figure out a plan to make it work better. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So now we're onto the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I have.
Yes. Laurel?
I have a question on the consent agenda. I'm really excited about the CTE, and I know it has a name, and of course I had to go through seven screens to go find it again. Futureville, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm excited about that. The only concern I had is, and I'm saying this here, and please let me know if there's another time when this part is going to be coming. But I learned in the paper months ago that a family had already been picked out. And I would think, I would like to know that there, if there is, I would like to know what the process is and what that looks like and make sure we're using an equitable process to make sure who, how this, how this happens. And I haven't seen it.
We're gonna, we're gonna have CTE an update, and we can ask that question specifically at our next meeting.
Yes, but the consent is in here. So I don't, I would like to know about this project. I would like, if I'm consenting to that part of it, and so I would like to pause that one little section to say I would like to know more about what that is.
Hey, Carrie, can you, Andy is in the audience, so if you can move him over to the panel. He's in the panel already. Okay, Andy, I, he's on the line, sorry.
There he is. Great. Okay.
Hi, everybody. I'm hoping I can be heard.
Yes.
Laurel, that's a great question. I've got to be honest, I, I do not believe that a family has already been selected for this home. What I would like to do, though, is have a conversation with Cornerstone Housing and find out whether or not I'm mistaken, but I, but I, I don't believe I am. I do not, quite honestly, know enough about the process for their selection of who, to whom the home would be discharged to speak in a, with confidence in a public meeting. But I can get that information and come back to you.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be helpful.
So Andy, can I ask a follow-up to that? The item that's on our agenda with that, can you explain what that is? Can that still go forward and still get the information? It's not about who's, we're not near having someone move in yet, right?
No, no. We're, we're at the point where we're looking to get a contract to start the work with Miley Construction. Not anything about the selection of the family with, who would ultimately get the home.
So, could, I mean, I, I think we could get that information, but it doesn't.
So do we have a contract with Cornerstone Housing that we've already approved?
No, we don't have a contract with Cornerstone Housing. Our contract at this point is with Miley Construction for the construction of the home.
Okay. So, and you mentioned Cornerstone Housing will be the one who is, and they are low-income.
Yeah.
Correct. They're, they're a community partner who would then work with a family. And again, I can't say exactly how they select the families, but they're the ones that are really focused on working with that dimension of the community housing issue. That's not something that, that we feel like we're best staffed or trained to do and would prefer to work with a partner.
So we have a memorandum of understanding, some kind of, what, no document? Of how this is going to work? So I, I guess I want on record that I would like to know that we have a MOU, a memorandum of standing of how this is going to work. I know they do this work, but also, I read about this in the RG, and I was like, thanks. And this was months and months ago, so it could be a mistake, I get that. We know the RG places Texas weather sometimes, since that's where they're located now.
So Laurel, can I, can I just, since we are going to have CTE on the, an update on career technical education and our projects and what's going on, we can, at our next meeting, we could ask for this specific information related to this project, where it is, what the process is, would that work for you?
I think you should.
I mean, that's the information you want, no one has.
Does that timeline work?
We can, we can start the project, we need to get the kids out there, and we need to start the project, and then that piece comes behind it. So it's, it's fine to talk about that part with the CTE. Do you have anything to add? I saw you open your screen up, so I wondered if there's something.
No, not at this time. Thank you, Sid.
So, can we have a motion for the consent agenda? Okay, so Maya moves that we have, we have three items on the consent agenda, and Laurel has seconded. Is there any discussion, more discussion on that? And all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The motion passes, I didn't, did you vote aye, Alicia?
Yep.
All the, all those, the motion passes unanimously with five votes. Okay, and we have moved the item for action, which is considering applicants for the appointment to the board and select the finalists for interview. So we, the process that we established is, we did an initial, as some of you heard this tonight, we had three to five-minute presentation from each applicant. We had 38 applicants, but a few withdrew. I didn't get an exact count, but we had 36, I think we heard from. And so the board will be voting. We had agreed that we could move six candidates, up to six forward, since there's two positions open. So we will do the first round of interview, and everyone can vote for six people.
And then what?
And then we tabulate them, and we'll see where we are.
I have votes, yeah.
And if someone has no votes, we'll probably take them off and we'll just keep voting until we get four votes to move them forward.
Yes.
Yes.
We have the pens available? If everybody wants six, we'll cover them.
Is that a two? Do you have people that have definitely dropped out that are, are going to be on?
Sure, let me just give the quick overview. We received 38 applications in school. Last night, yesterday, we contacted all of the applicants to set a time for them to speak to the board before, as to withdraw. So 34 applicants are on this list. They are the ones who were invited and expected to come and speak tonight. You heard from 29 of them tonight, the rest are still in consideration, and you have their written applications. But those are just the 34, none of these have.
Carrie, can you say one more time that if no one is selected, then those names will be removed?
So the process the board has used in past processes like this has been to do the initial vote. If you have clear candidates that all give a majority, support, and then move forward. If additional rounds of voting are needed, what's been done in the past is to drop off any candidates who received zero votes, vote again, and often then drop off any candidates who received only one vote, vote again, working towards a slate of candidates, all of whom have majority support.
Majority, not quorum.
So majority of the full board, which is four board members, even though there are only five seated board members at this time? Yes, thank you for the clarification.
So Carrie, are you going to get some help tabulating from someone?
We are tabulating votes as they come in. When all votes are received, we'll read them back into the record and.
Is everybody turned in?
And, you know, let me.
Are you guys in those, that's difficult, right? They were all done early.
No, we look at it, I'm still, I'm still done. I think you're done first.
I don't understand.
Gordon was done first, I noticed.
That is happening here.
He was a smart kid.
Was it a model testing?
I think I have an accommodation for my needs.
We said definitely.
What'd you say?
We said definitely.
Oh, yeah.
That's the thing that I was saying in my head.
All right, we have votes tallied. So board member Gordon Laverco voted for Danny Crowley, Tom DiLaverco, Scott Feldman, Michelle Chu, Dan Patrick Isaacson, and Jennifer Johnick.
That's really fast. Coming with visuals?
Yes, you may have visuals. It's, there are a lot of candidates, so the visuals are small. Alicia Hayes voted for Michelle Chu, Jennifer Johnick, Kirti Hasidah Kaufman, Jackson Kai Kellod, Jeff, oh, excuse me, Mary Ann Senhaus, and Carlos Segarra. Judy Newman voted for Deborah Daly, Jennifer Johnick, Kirti Hasidah Kaufman, excuse me, Jackson Kai Kellod, Erica Rauer, and Carlos Segarra. Laurel Lovrak voted for Deborah Daly, Tom DiLaverco, Jesse James Egan Senior, Michelle Chu, Katina Johnston, and Jacob Taylor. Marking down one from the paper without a name, which I have in my kit. Maya Velaza voted for Ursula Brady, Tom DiLaverco, Misty Rose Frost, Thomas Hura, Michelle Chu, and Andrew Ross.
Did you get a picture of the screen loaded up?
Or can you just read them one more time?
I, I can, and I can also share that the total votes cast, and I will zoom in so you can see this in more detail. How's that? Ursula Brady received one vote. Danny Crowley received one vote. Deborah Daly received two votes. Tom DiLaverco received three votes. Jesse James Egan received one vote. Scott Feldman received one vote. Misty Rose Frost received one vote. Thomas Hura received one vote. Michelle Chu received four votes. Dan Patrick Isaacson received one vote. Katina Johnston received one vote. Jennifer Johnick received three votes. Kirti Hasidah Kaufman received two votes. Jackson Kellod received two votes. Erica Rauer received one. Andrew Ross received one. Mary Ann Senhaus received one. Carlos Segarra received two. Jacob Taylor received one. Jacob Taylor received one. So, vote, candidates who received no votes, among the limited votes available, were Rachel Lynn Anderson, Christopher Ashton, Kate Friesen, Rhonda Chandalia, Jacqueline Hall, Jeffrey Krebs, Angela Luke, Sheila, Shelley Young Mace, Dani McGermit, Jessica Madai, Edgar Ted Rodriguez, Harry Sanger, Amber White, Nicole Winther, and Chris Young. There's one candidate who received four votes from the board. One option is to take that candidate, move them forward, remove any candidates who received zero votes, and then cast votes again with each person, each board member casting five votes. Is that a good plan looking forward? I will need a minute to, if this is the time for break, we'll need a minute to reset.
Do you do a thumbs up on the process or something?
Yeah.
Laurel, are you good with this?
Yeah.
Just move forward with the one that shot.
Four votes, and then we'll take the zeros off and we'll vote again with five votes. So we get a break? Yeah. It will take a few minutes to take every step. Thank you. So, again, one candidate has been moved forward. They received four votes. And so now board members are casting five votes on remaining candidates. We're running through our two, I think. Yes, votes have been tallied and I can bring this up on the screen again. So we've had the votes. Board member Alicia Hayes voted for Deborah Daly, Jennifer Jonak voted, excuse me, Alicia Hayes voted for Deborah Daly, Jennifer Jonak, Kirky Hasajat Kaufman, Jackson Kellag, and Carlos Segarra. Gordon Laverde voted for Danny Crowley, Tom DiLaverco, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, and Andrew Ross. Judy Newman voted for Scott Feldman, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Jennifer Jonak, Kirky Hasajat Kaufman, and Carlos Segarra. Laurel O'Rourke voted for Tom DiLaverco, Jesse James Egan Senior, Thomas Hura, Katina Johnston, and did not have a vote. Maya Ralasa voted for Tom DiLaverco, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Andrew Ross, and Carlos Segarra. So the total vote tally is one vote for Danny Crowley, one vote for Deborah Daly, three votes for Tom DiLaverco, one vote for Jesse James Egan Senior, one vote for Scott Feldman, three votes for Thomas Hura, three votes for Daniel Patrick Isaacson.
I'm sorry, could you?
Three votes for Daniel Patrick Isaacson.
Three?
Three votes for Thomas Hura, three votes for Daniel Patrick Isaacson. Slow down a little bit.
No, no, that's good.
One vote for Katina Johnston, two votes for Jennifer Jonak, two votes for Kirky Hasajat Kaufman, one vote for Jackson Kellag, two votes for Andrew Ross, and three votes for Carlos Segarra. So then to move forward, we could again remove all candidates who received no votes and vote again, or increase the number of votes that each, that each board member casts. How was it, how before, like you before, how before you record?
What, floor vote? Increase the number of votes. That makes sense, I bet.
We could each get, I mean, we could move it faster if we each get six votes again, rather than five.
I've got all my votes on one. That was a pretty good, Alicia.
Sounds like something I would try.
Let's
Move the zeros?
But we moved the zeros.
Oh, yeah, sure.
We need another moment to make it balance, we'll be back shortly.
Maybe moving it up.
Get something then, I think we can see. Like in a hallway?
No, 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 like
And then just keep it, I think.
I got some cash.
So we still decide. That's right. It's getting difficult.
I'm open to those suggestions too, but I was proposing.
I need to wait up. What do you want us to wait? But Carrie, my purse is late. Am I saying what? Six to nine counts?
Up to six.
Up to six, seven, eight counts?
Yeah, we could do six again. That might just pull one.
No, I was saying how many people. I would keep it five.
I would keep it five. Well, you can even do that last time. Because we took your mind, you got one.
Is this your pressure, there's after-school specials about people like you? Dude, he's a jerk. I'm not sure I should try. I'm so tired. Something else. I think, I think this. Well, yeah, just this four right now. Yeah, I think we should go down to four. I think it's more
Go down to four. Four, four votes, right?
Because I mean Wait, but we need six people.
Yeah, we need six people. We need six people.
We don't need, we need up to six people.
Up to six. Right, but as we go down to four, then we end up eliminating.
That's true.
I mean, I'm here, I'm happy to do this over and over and over and over. But if we keep the number high, then we could just keep, like, spreading, like, right, like, we can keep changing our minds. Because clearly we've changed our minds.
If I order a lot, they will, they just bring it.
Like, just
That's true.
So we're, it's going to be, we're voting for five.
It is time. Forty-five.
So we're five?
One, five, five. All right. I do think eventually they have to lower our number.
Someday. Are you trying to do first?
No.
It just works out that way.
All right, the tally of voting round three. Board member Alicia Hayes voted for Deborah Bailey, Jennifer John, Kirte Hesekahoffman, Jackson Kellogg, and Carlos Seguera.
Oh, I know. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I'm sorry, my mistake. My eyeballs were not.
I can slow down if people are trying to make notes. Gordon Laker voted for Danny Crowley, Tom DiLiberto, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, and Andrew Ross. Judy Newman voted for Scott Feldman, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Jennifer John, Kirte Hesekahoffman, and Carlos Seguera. Laurel Overk voted for Deborah Bailey, Tom DiLiberto, Scott Feldman, Thomas Hura, Katina Johnston. Maya Rabasa voted for Deborah Bailey, Tom DiLiberto, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, and Andrew Ross. So the tally is that Danny Crowley has one vote, Deborah Bailey has three votes, Tom DiLiberto has three votes, Scott Feldman has two votes, Thomas Hura has three votes, Daniel Patrick Isaacson has three votes, Katina Johnston has one vote, Jennifer John has two votes, Kirte Hesekahoffman has two votes, Jackson Kellogg has one vote, Andrew Ross has two votes, and Carlos Seguera has two votes. Receiving zero votes in this round was Jesse James Egan Senior. So moving forward to the next round, we can eliminate the the candidate who received zero votes. In past processes, the board has also sometimes decided to remove, especially when we reach this point, remove any candidates who received only one vote and move forward to the next round. How would you like to proceed?
I agree with the one vote.
Remove everybody who received zero or no votes. So that would be removing Danny Crowley, Jesse James Egan Senior, Katina Johnston, and Jackson Kellogg, and moving forward with remaining candidates being Deborah Bailey.
Good with that, so we heard from one person what we didn't get.
That's okay with me.
You should say what it would be.
What it would be. What it would be. Moving forward with Deborah Bailey, Tom DiLiberto, Scott Feldman, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Jennifer John, Kirte Hesekahoffman, Andrew Ross, and Carlos Seguera. Moving forward.
Just wanted to make sure Laurel wasn't accusing you of trying to do over the process.
It's just really quiet over here.
So is everyone okay with that, or?
Yes, I believe you've got thumbs up on that.
I I don't.
Are you high up?
Yes, and I think we also need to at the same time reduce the number of votes that we cast. Because if not, we could cast one for a week.
Oh, we, you can always let you let your votes.
Yeah. Let's see how this works and then that may be the next.
Yeah, that would be nice. All right.
Probably right.
So does that a thumbs up on that process, check or make a new ballot, or remove any people who received zero or one votes? I mean, this will pay.
Alicia and Gordon, I think we're thumbs up.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes. You put the backup.
I'm working with it, and I will.
Okay, I just needed the last one. Oh, thanks. I guess I should have done that.
Can you actually do this at like eleven again?
You don't almost make it lunch.
So we have nine. If you look at the vote tally.
Oh, right, you got nine.
Two, yeah.
I was counting. I just wondered. Is that, Alicia's suggestion could be moved in between to other agenda items.
No, I was saying, is there anything that doesn't have to happen and I'm giving the, this can go on. After we committed to doing everything.
Yeah. I don't wanna.
Okay, I'm just asking her to look, I didn't.
Not making a.
I think we have to see, don't we have to see the key performance, like we put it out.
Yeah, well, we're, we're gonna have questions if we've read that, I think, right? Is there any, so.
Let me see your agenda.
It's the. Calendar template, I'm sure.
Oh, thank you, Lisa. Mine was like overlaying.
Do you have to use my notes?
I can find it too. And then I.
I couldn't, yeah.
We forgot about it. So I was having to use my.
Um, JP, I asked my, I'm sorry, I wonder if it's in.
Yeah, I'm. Done it.
So we can just add two more wonders.
No, help with it.
You guys don't have to move, and I told you, you got openings. So I just studied them, opened them, and was taking care of it.
You know, here.
Yes, we said the word has an omen. I just have, because I'm thinking yours were full, so I might get it started. I sort of opened it.
He's given up. My son. I've been in meetings every time he's outworked and then he's event, so I haven't talked to him.
Correct, so ballots are being handed out. We have remaining ballot for Deborah Bailey, Tom DiLiberto, Scott Feldman, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Jennifer Joseph, John, Kirte Hesekahoffman, Andrew Ross, Carlos Seguera, and board members are voting still for five. And it's correct.
Oh, okay. Karen's ready. Gets faster.
Yes, so to read back the votes. Board member Alicia Hayes voted for Deborah Bailey, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Jennifer John, Kirte Hesekahoffman, Carlos Seguera. Gordon Laker voted for Tom DiLiberto, Scott Feldman, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Andrew Ross. Judy Newman voted for Scott Feldman, Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Jennifer John, Kirte Hesekahoffman, Carlos Seguera. Laurel Overk voted for Deborah Bailey, Tom DiLiberto, Thomas Hura, and did not cast a board or big vote.
Wait, Laurel voted for a Hura?
Laurel Overk voted for Deborah Bailey, Tom DiLiberto, Thomas Hura, and did not cast a board or big vote.
Yeah. Didn't see that.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Did, did it go like that?
Thank you.
On the screen.
Yeah, there's.
I'm sorry, do we have it in the wrong place? Thank you for the correction. Yes. Oh, we put typo in the wrong box there. Maya Ork voted for, oh, sorry, Mar.
Because we wanted to wait until you go.
Maya Rabasa voted for Tom DiLiberto, Thomas Hura, and Andrew Ross. So the question is, we we have no candidates in this round who received zero or one votes. We've also never before had board members abstain from voting for some, and that is a decision to be made as to whether that's part of the process going forward, or whether you would like to change the number of votes in the next round.
Seems going down only causes us to not come to a conclusion.
Right.
You mean going down in votes?
No, going down votes causes a conclusion. We have this many because we, I don't know for.
Spread out.
Wait, say, would, can we, hey Judy, can we just take a moment out and then or we're gonna have a discussion on the procedure.
I was just saying, if, say, we all got six votes, we might be able to. Get more people voting for what I'm gonna pass forward.
Oh, it would be five.
Then we have one person.
No, it's a, we were saying that it would be easier for somebody to get four votes.
It would be easier, because what I'm noticing is when people only do three, then that.
Right.
The, you know, you could have.
The people.
If they are, if there's somebody else you want, then I don't know what.
I thought we had said that we could do up to. You can. I was, I was, I, I. I am a rule follower, and if the rule was that I was supposed to do five, I apologize, but I understood it, and I even called it up to five, right?
It was up to five, up to whatever, up to six.
It was. And I, and I'd also made it really clear that I wanted us to keep putting the numbers down so we'd be able to get.
I was at a mic.
Well, well, so where do you? I think, I, we're gonna move, we could move six people, let's try one with more, with six votes, and then if that doesn't do it, we'll go.
But we've already moved one.
What?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Laurel, let me take a breath.
Um, I, I find it, I can't ethically vote for somebody that the people that are left are not people I ever picked. So I'm not going to all of a sudden now pick them, because that's forcing me to choose somebody that I didn't want, and that's not gonna happen. So I picked the people that are left, I have tried to whittle down out of everybody I liked, and I'm down to who I, who I like from who is left.
I appreciate that, and if we all feel that way, then we're just.
Then we're just stuck, so maybe we just go to the interview with all of these.
Oh, that's a lot. Well, why don't we, there's, there's.
So that's an option.
Yeah.
Or you all go down to three, and a little people will come out.
That's how, yeah, it will help.
I'm, 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 this is my thinking face.
Judy had a different face.
I did, I went.
I have my, my thing. Can I say something? Sure. So noticing that there's three people with three votes, and those three people, not necessarily the same people each time, but those three people have been getting three votes for the last three votes. Why don't we move those forward and then reduce the twos down to back to somebody from the twos? Because they're obviously.
I'm not okay with that. I'm okay, I think it's four votes, and. I'm okay, I think it's four votes, and part of it is I have moved my votes around trying to.
Yeah, too.
You know. I, maybe.
I think we've all been there a little bit, based on the way I have.
Yeah.
Then some of us have kept our votes in some of the spaces.
Right.
So I think we've all done a little bit of that. But we're not moving them at the same time in six spots.
I would be good with trying.
Right.
I would be good with trying one more round and going down to four, and then having, like, seeing where we're at and discussing. Honestly, both, just both discussing process and discussing why we're voting the way we are. Either somewhere to, to come to more consensus, or actually, God forbid, talking about.
So the same people again?
Well, we're not gonna put new people back.
Well, that's, I'm just clarifying.
Yes, no, I'm not talking about expanding the, the number of candidates.
I mean, so if everybody got two or three, you're saying not to eliminate any of those people, right?
I don't think we have.
No, let's, let's celebrate, we have.
That's it.
Remember where we did last.
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to, to do your idea, but I don't, I don't think there's anything. To be lost by being open and transparent and communicating, but. I don't know.
Well, I would do a round, about one more round of voting beforehand and see where we're at, because.
Question, do we want to vote with more points or fewer? Because we're trying to move people.
Well. I guess I, it, it, here's, I mean, there's two ways we could go, right? Either we can, as, as I see it, either we. Stay here till we get enough people who have four votes each, or we can get to some point where it's narrowed enough and we say. I think you just said, just, let's just put this whole group of people through. So, my thought on going down to four is maybe we get closer to that. You know, that's, that we have to, decision that we'd have to make as a, with at least four votes to make any decision, procedural decision.
So somebody gets one or zero votes?
I mean, we're not, then we don't have to decide, right? It's gonna show us something that we could either take into account or not take into account. Does everybody wants to vote six?
What, what are we voting?
How many are we voting?
We, we haven't decided how many we're voting.
We just.
Okay.
How many?
My. My vote on this is that we have it as fewer, so we can move more people along. I think, I mean, that's obviously what's happening here is, you know, we're a board of five people and, um. People don't wanna work with what's happening. We've got forty letters about, I think, supporting Tom DiLiberato's candidacy. He only lost for a prize, three thousand. You were in meetings where we were candidates together saying, I would vote for you if I could, but I'm, you're running against me unfortunately. And, I mean, that's on tape, that's on record, I hold, it's on.
Laurel, I don't think so, and actually, what I said on tape, because I, I took a lot of flack, and I think so did Alicia, when we appointed Jim Torrey after losing that election. And when I ran for office and you guys were at the forum at the DPLC, and you were at the forum in Kel, and I was asked that question, and I said I wouldn't make that same mistake again. I said that publicly to two large groups of people, because they really, I was completely. Um, uh, we, we really took it for voting for someone who did.
This isn't the same though.
Yeah.
This is.
It is.
But Jim actually got more votes.
He was an incumbent in his election.
But wait, the difference is that Tom was not.
He wasn't.
The comment that was voted.
It's completely different.
It was not different, I was.
You were the incumbent.
I, that was not different.
So I think.
We can have said.
Well, you can think it's different, I'm the one who made the public statement.
I'm.
No, I'm talking about the comparison of Tom to, to Jim Torrey, is it completely different?
I think if comparing the situation, Maya, and you can make your own judgment, it was not a different situation. I was committing to not making that same mistake again, and I won't. So I.
Did we get the same amount of letters saying we all love, we got forty letters saying we won?
Getting forty letters is different than getting votes. I looked, went back to the election, and actually, Jim got two thousand votes, more votes than Tom did in the election. So I, it's not even the number of votes, it was the point that we voted someone that was lost in election, and I said publicly at the DPLC, and I said at a Kel.
He, uh, I. I, it there's. Philosophically, this is not at all the same. Though you're saying the difference between somebody who's been on the board for, I don't know how many years, was sitting on the board, and people decided to replace them with somebody else, and I would like to finish this before you erupt, and now. It, then the board decided, we don't care what the public says, we're bringing the person you removed, you took them out. This, we're not talking about somebody who's been here, never been here. They removed, that's a, uh. The DPLC, everyone will say, that's a very different statement, when we say we do not want the incumbent, because we know incumbents usually win. So that is a powerful statement, when an incumbent loses, and then a board says, we don't care, we bring them back. You're right, that was reprehensible. Um, the, very different, when we have somebody who is just been an educator, part of our community, um. Every time I listen to them talk, I, I'm just like, dang, you're good at this, I wish I could talk better, and. And they're here wanting to do this hard work, and are smart, and know a lot, and are a teacher for, I think he's thirty some years. Um. It's a very different thing. So I think what is happening here is sour grapes, because you, you guys used to have all the votes, and you don't. And it's, it's sad to me, because you're hurting somebody who would be of benefit to our board, and I don't think they would just. They have their own brain, they're not part of us, they're not part of you. I'm saying this person hasn't been here, can I speak? Hasn't.
Can we? I'm sorry, can I get on the queue at some point?
Yeah, I'm just saying, you, you can do the analysis the way you want, it's my integrity, I'm the one who made this statement. I've been a member of the DPLC, I've also, I've been, I mean, I, I was there, I said it, and, um, I have my own reasons. So that I can't, I cannot do it, I promised the people, the public, that I would not do that. So I, you can have your interpretation of it, but I'm the one who lived the calls, the, the having to meet with people about it and talk about it.
Yeah.
And I did learn from. Gordon.
Can I call on myself for something?
Gordon.
Thank you. Um, you know, for whatever it's worth, I think we should be voting on who we think should be the best person. I'll say for myself, when I voted, I voted to see Maya rather than Jim Torrey, it was not because of the results of the election, and I said that. I took very seriously the fact that four colleagues who had worked with him for a long time all supported him. It was because I thought it was the right time to put a Latina woman on the board, especially in the events that had been happening that, that summer, which I. So much junk that has happened that I forget exactly what, but I remember there were, there were really serious things happening. And here, I think that, um. You know, I just think that if we think about the importance of having teacher voice on the board, I, I will say, I'm kind of shocked that there's such opposition to having teacher voice, that it's like, we don't even wanna let this guy have an interview. We know that having teacher voice is one of the things that we need to improve the situation of teacher demoralization, which Serena Gordon described, but frankly, we didn't need her description. We've seen that all around, doesn't it? It's not unique to Eugene. And to say at this point, we have one person who can bring that kind of perspective to the board, and we don't even wanna give him an interview, to me is, um, is really surprising, and I think is, is a mistake on its facts, and it's not about, for me, it's not about. Election results or comparing one process or another. Um, so I, I really, I don't understand that, I guess, why, why there would be opposition to saying we wanna interview and hear more from somebody who's the only path to having teacher voice on the board, and, and who has gotten, you know. I agree, votes and, and letters are different, but getting forty emails from former students and parents of former students, talking about how valuable they thought his insight was, is something, right? It's not. And I, and so I can't see why somebody would say, no, we don't even wanna give that person a chance. What?
I appreciate that.
I guess I would just, sorry, can I interrupt you for one second? I wanna raise one other structural possibility or procedural possibility. I think you originally, before we settled on this thing, said, what if we all just say our top two people, and then those people will be finalists? I thought that came from you, it came from.
No.
Somebody who wasn't to me, was that?
It was just to see if we could get four votes.
Right. I think we have the time to.
Four votes are that policy.
He said each of us pick two.
Right, and then I thought maybe we'd get four votes for some people, that was it. It was always about four votes.
Okay, well, and I think, since what we're talking about now is not putting somebody on the board, we're talking about interviewing people.
Yeah.
More in depth, we could do that, we could say each one of us names our top person, and those people go to the finalists in addition to the one person who got four votes. I just think that we need to find a way to move to the next step, right? This is not the final step, this is not interviewing people.
I, we, we can try one round of six votes each. I don't think that's the only way to move it.
Were you gonna say something, Alicia?
I'm willing to try one round of six.
Six, six, I don't have people to vote.
Or nine, people, four, or whatever.
I think that we should get much, I mean, six out of nine. Six votes out of nine options is going to leave us with.
No, no, I said four, I just said.
Okay, I, I would not agree six, I think.
No, I said, I.
You're saying four and six sound for many.
No, I am not just gonna do that in responding to Judy's suggestion, not around six. I, I also, um, I, I also would prefer to go Gordon's route, where we end up with six. The other way. Ultimately, we're still gonna have to vote on these finalists, but I, I.
I appreciate, I appreciate, you all have, we all, yeah. I didn't get a talk.
Go ahead.
Appreciate, we all have our opinions, this is really harm, and it's a big thing. And just listening to, um, the way Laurel sees the situation, and listening to the way Judy sees the situation. There are two different ways, and they're all very personal, and I respect each of those. I know what it felt like, um, to sit here and take that beat for Jim, and I know that a big part of that was to get that diverse voice on the, on the board. And so I think the cool thing is, we have a lot of diverse voices in this. Where, scoring sheet. And I'd like to give it one more shot, and I'd like to see if we can come up with something. And I just wanna still respect each other, that we have different ways of looking at it, and our own opinion, and I, I respect your appreciation for Tom. I respect that I had a conversation with him, um, and was clear with him when we decided to run for my support.
You decided to run in the election, or we, that's.
And also I bet. No, but it was clear, um, and it's been clear all along for me, so. Um, I don't wanna get into the people that have written me about why I shouldn't put Tom on the board, that's not fair, um, just like, because they didn't write the whole board. Um, but, uh, he will not get my vote, and if we move it forward, he won't get my vote in the final, so we're just moving forward to not get the vote. So.
We have an agreement not to talk like that.
I know, it's probably late, I'm just saying, you guys talked about all the letters you got, I just wanted to know.
We all got those letters. I didn't get secret letters from my admirers saying to do certain things.
Well, I know, but you, you get.
I don't, I don't, I don't.
I don't get certain letters from staff that tell you, and this is just internal, because I've shared it with them, so that's good.
Can I, I just say, um. I don't know, I'll try to say this respectfully, but I feel like this is anti-teacher to me. There's one person who's gonna bring. Well, you kinda look like that, Judy, but here's what, we have no one with that experience, we have huge demand, we have people quitting. We've said over and over, and not just that we've said, like, lots of people have said, we have a crisis of demoralization, we have a crisis of feel, of people feeling like they're not, you know, they don't have enough of a voice, and to sit here and say, um, I'm not even gonna listen to an interview, there's nothing this person could say. There's, that would make me, uh, they're, honestly, I'm not inside anybody's head, but to me, what it, what it looks like is some kind of political calculation to keep a teacher's voice and, or somebody who has a history in the teachers' union off the board, and I think that's. I don't, if that's what it is, I don't think that's a principled reason to do it.
It's not what it is.
Well, I don't like being accused of that, Gordon, I can have a different opinion. I don't think one teacher can represent all teachers, but, but we.
Well, how can zero do it?
Can I please have, can I please have a say? I think what the district needs to do is have strong partnership, stronger partnership with EEA that represents many, many teachers. And then we have the voice we need, and figure out how that dynamic works. I don't believe one person, I think this board needs some other also perspectives as well. So I just have a different opinion, the union is an anti-teacher, I would prefer to get a broader set of teacher voice. Tom is great, and he's worked in this district, and he's worked in one school for many, many years with a certain group of kids, and that is very valuable. I really do value his input. He's a wonderful person, and he's done a great job with kids. But I can also feel that I'd rather, when I went to listening sessions with the EA, I learned a whole lot more than listening to one voice. So that is really how I feel, and so please don't accuse me of being anti-teaching.
Okay, I'll, I, I would say that one of the things that I think is so valuable about Tom is not just his personal experience, but his experience in leadership of the union, which means he was one of those people who had, you know, who had conversations with everybody, and to say one person can't rep, I mean, obviously, one teacher can't represent all, all, all teachers, but why are we looking for diversity here, right? One Latina woman can't represent Latina people either, so I could say. I wouldn't say the board, excuse me, I'm in the middle of talking, Alicia.
Apologize.
Thank you, thank you. You know, I, I wouldn't say the board, what, the board could just be all like straight white guys, because after all, you know, black women can't represent black people, and nobody can represent, but the point is, we wanna have different voices, and I think an educator voice is one of the most crucial things that is missing here. And to not, and to be so committed to not hearing that, as to not give somebody a final interview, I think is a terrible mistake, and I can't see it, except not wanting that voice, which frankly, is the voice of not just one person, but of true experience across the district from having been in a leadership position for a long time.
Can I, I, um.
I'm sorry.
I, I think that, um, that, uh, for, for a long time, representation has been prevented on that basis, and I'm not saying that you are anti-teacher, but unfortunately, the argument that we're not gonna pick anyone, because one person can't represent everyone, has led to very narrow power structures, and that makes me really nervous to use that as an argument, because one is still better than zero. The two other points I wanna make is that, yes, going to those EEA listening sessions are incredibly valuable, they do not have to stop, but we also have to recognize that Tom is who EEA said we would like this person to be on the board to represent the voice of teachers. So already, part of the, like, ongoing listening of EEA has been, we want teacher representation, and teachers can't be on this board that are current employees of the school district, and Tom is no longer a current employee of the school district, but has so many years in such close proximity to this, to the teacher experience, that, that I, it, it's, it's, it's really hard for me to, um. To, to be able to stand by a decision like that. The last thing I'm gonna say is, if we want to build a better relationship with EEA, this is hardly the way to go without them. I don't think it will help.
Okay, so, we've talked about one candidate, does it make sense that we talk about each one and go down? Like, I was confused, but I thought. Joe wasn't a teacher.
Yeah.
So, and Carlos wasn't a teacher. Um, and then he retired, just like Tom. Um and then he retired just like Tom, so not keeping teacher voice up. Like, do you wanna just go down each person and and talk about the pros and cons for each person?
Absolutely, since we've done that.
Maybe we should just, I don't, I'm okay doing that if that's what everybody wants to do, but maybe we should do our round of four voting and see if it gets us anyplace. I feel like we're getting more uh we're getting further from a, you know, we can look out of here with, and rather than push it together. Yeah, if everybody wants to go through, I'm okay.
Like, so we did it before, and so if other people wanted to, that's all.
If other people wanted.
You guys wanna just vote?
I I will go either way of that one.
Just go ahead and try the vote, what you guys think and see how we do.
So, four votes, that's on this one?
Yeah.
So tallying the votes in round five. Belisha Hayes vote cast votes for Deborah Daly, Scott Feldman, Jennifer Jonak, and Kirte Haaschek-Haufmann. Gordon Laper cast votes for Tom DiVerdo, Thomas Hura, Andrew Ross. Daniel Patrick Isakson. Judy Newman cast votes for Deborah Bailey, Daniel Patrick Isakson, Kirte Haaschek-Haufmann, and Carlos Seheda. Laurel Orver cast votes for Tom DiVerdo, Thomas Hura, who did not cast her vote vote. Maya Olivasa voted for Deborah Bailey, Tom DiVerdo, Thomas Hura, and Andrew Ross. The total votes in round five for Deborah Bailey, three. Tom DiVerdo, three. Scott Feldman, one. Thomas Hura, three. Daniel Patrick Isakson, two. Jennifer Jonak, one. Kirte Haaschek-Haufmann, two. Andrew Ross, two. Carlos Seheda, one. Okay. Have we taken this anywhere? So. Judy, yes, can we take the ten minute vote? Yeah.
So it looks like.
Yeah, we just had a different plus three or four.
Yeah, we just had a different plus two of three.
Can I just, yeah, I mean, there is that possibility, which is if we have one, two, three, four, five, six people who got two or three. We could just say all of those plus the person who got four are gonna be interviewed.
I'm not gonna attend. One, two, three.
What's that?
I would not approve of people holding us hostage because personal concerns. Oh, I'm watching, excuse me, go on, please go, guys.
I think it's sour grapes. I don't approve of people. This is like Gordon said, it's the first round. Um this behavior, I think, is is not appropriate.
No, this is not working well together.
You're, cuz I would. Did you hear what she said?
I asked what she said.
She said, I won't do it. And I said, we can move seven forward and you said, no. I heard that.
Right, cuz we, we have to vote on that.
So that, that we could either work together, which everybody likes to claim the black lady is always making things difficult, which is of course part of racial oppression. Which several people that you guys voted for were talking like this during these interviews. Um, I will say that we have.
Maybe we should have raised the basis of this decision.
I know, you're not doing this. You can leave.
Laurel.
Um, well, I will finish talking. I'm gonna say that we have the ability to work together right now and say seven.
Laurel.
Oh.
I will.
And keep just continue with the rest of our meeting and work together in a way that grownups do. Or we can just sit here like this and go, no, we're gonna wait until exactly what we want it to be.
Okay, I'm gonna call a recess right now and then we'll come back and make this decision. I'm gonna call a ten minute recess. It's nine twenty-two, so let's come back at nine thirty-two.
That's not appropriate to just adjourn because you don't like, that's controlling process. It's set to get your way and that's it.
I would vote, Laurel, we would vote on it. Please don't just.
No, I'm upset with your behavior. I think we can work together.
I'd like to work together.
No, I'm trying to, I'm I'm trying to collaborate and your guys are like, nope, it has to be exactly my way. That is not appropriate. How have you meant, how have you meant our way? How have you meant my way?
And I feel like you're saying the same way. You've only voted certain votes cuz you don't want anyone else. That's not the way.
I want the people I picked.
Well, so do I. So do I.
Those people are little really important.
I want for people to choose.
So why would you do that? This is sort of running a lot.
Yeah, I could move them all. So you can move them all till you like, you're doing this right now.
I would do a run. This is what I'm trying to do. I did too. Um and that, and one person emerged to come back to, I I see that you and I both moved and we, and and a person.
I just, I'm taking a recess so I can think about this.
I I just, I'm triggered right now. What I would want to do is to, seven is one more.
Yeah, I'm gonna consider that.
I, yeah, no, you're right, I do, I do, I just kept thinking about it.
You do.
I don't know how the coffee car is. Otherwise I find it.
I, you know, I. It is. Yeah, this is.
I think we're actually on the floor.
I know, nobody, you guys don't think about what I'm saying. This is what, this is what I'm trying to say, is that Laurel would not vote to pass somebody who didn't preach and praise at the altar. How's that any different than paralyzing the sand or anything else? There are parents in this district who don't believe in this ideological agenda that is driving our school board's decisions. Well, they shouldn't disparage each other.
You can disparage me, I'm really disparaged.
Don't share your tone.
I talked about race and that's horrible.
Yes, it shouldn't exist.
It's like you can't stand.
Oh, yeah. He, he held it together for longer than he usually does. This is like his best.
I think Judy knows more about it than, like, you know.
Oh, of course he does. You can wipe me out. And now ask.
Do you guys remember late coffee or? Anyway, why?
I can't, I can tell you I'm not.
It's not a good thing. Okay, wait a minute. Coffee.
My son had oral surgery today. I'm like texting during the meeting like, is he still bleeding? I could be at home, but.
He's seventeen, he doesn't care. Just so you know. If you mom, I'm the one who's like, someone to stare at you and make you go, yeah. We shouldn't. He's, he's fine.
He has this little wisdom toothache.
No, he has, he had an impacted, it was actually, he had an impacted canine. That was like all, and this is so funny when they're talking about it. They're like, actually it was right here, so it'll just have a nice little channel to go down. And it's like, I want you to know that also, it's boring, like.
I'm just getting a note, like, everybody, I mean, not that.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, like, I'm getting messages that everything was being separated.
Oh, it's cuz of this.
Yeah.
I just don't understand.
I'm ready for my.
I just don't.
Okay, we're gonna start now. Okay, Maya, we're gonna start now.
No, but everybody just keeps talking about it, but. I've been talking about this, but I just because I'm on talk show, I've never.
Yes, okay.
So I asked Carrie to put up.
I asked Carrie to put up our last results. And I think we'll just entertain some proposals about how to move forward and vote on them. So. We can vote one more time and then move all the twos and threes forward for interview with the one we have. And the other option is just to move this whole slate forward with the one we moved in. Those are the two choices, I'm thinking.
So, I'm not comfortable with just moving that whole slate and I'll take why, because we've talked ones out before. So, if we do anything, I would suggest we vote again. And go with it, if we're gonna do twos and threes.
I'm okay with that.
Laurel. Of the last one we did, leaves, it takes out, if we take out the ones, we only have seven left.
Right, but Maya and I both change, we would like to vote one more time if we're gonna do that. That's what we, because we both moved things and tried to move the.
So something, something was missed, no, okay.
Yeah. And just to think, knowing that's gonna be our procedure forward, we should vote one more time.
Okay.
Yes.
I also want part of this proposal to be that we don't try to vote on the twenty seventh. In fact, that maybe what we do is, you know, we interview on the twenty seventh instead of trying to cram these interviews in after after the meeting on the twenty fifth. Because with our meeting that we have on Sunday, I'm doing a lot to try to get ready for that meeting. And then, then trying to turn that somewhere around that fast just feels disrespectful.
Laurel. Um, I'm, I'm not gonna be coming to a meeting on Sunday. Uh, also, we voted to do it as we, we have a vote to do it that way, so we have to vote to change it. And I don't, we can't be talking about votes. If we're gonna follow Robert's rules, we can't be talking about votes and then be like, also, we should change everything we've decided up
Well, we'll take one of them at a time, like.
Yeah.
We'll have to vote to change it.
Um, and I.
Okay. So, if we're.
Do you want to make an amendment to Trudy's motion? Is that what you're doing?
Did you make, Trudy didn't make the motion. I, I said, I said we have two choices, so we could, uh, one would be let's vote again. And put forward the twos and threes. And then.
Uh, just to, I think procedurally, I'll make that as a motion, that we do that procedure. And if you wanna add.
Or I can just make the whole motion.
Oh, second amendment.
We may have to decide which I have.
Just make the motion. Okay, so we make the motion.
I'll make the motion, that we do what you just said.
We vote again.
We vote again, and then we move forward all the twos and threes.
So, okay, and Laurel, second amendment. Okay, now discussion. Or, any discussion?
Okay, let's call for the vote on that. Anyone who's okay with that, raise your hand. Okay, passes unanimously with a five to zero vote. Okay, let's do that.
Actually. Then I move, as you're supposed to be in front.
I said it was friendly, I just.
There was a.
But you wanna make this up?
I, I. I, um. I'm frustrated because you, I didn't get a chance to vote, put my amendment on the vote, but I guess it doesn't matter. Um, I would just like us to reconfigure um, the the timeline.
I think that would be a new motion.
That's what I'm doing. I'm looking at reconfiguring the timeline. To do the interviews on the twenty seventh, if there are at least a third, give me a week to.
Do I have a second? I'm gonna second that. So, any discussion? So, Laurel just let us know that she's not gonna be able to come on Sunday. Does that affect this?
It affects it more than.
Me too. It affects it more?
No, like the twenty seventh. I just, it just. We gotta squeeze in that back somewhere, and we can squeeze that in on Monday. I mean, it's just a whole.
Laurel.
The reasoning you wanted it, you said it's because you have to do all this stuff before Sunday. I, because of the behavior of what's happening here and the unwillingness to, to be flexible, I am not giving up my vacation time on Sunday because it's gonna, it's not, not at all. I also believe the reason you're wanting to change this is to stall adding um, new people to the board. And we need more people to the board so we can be effective. So, I want the timelines that we have and that we've already voted on. And I don't, I, I just wanna go on record saying, and this doesn't have to be rebutted, I will go on record saying, I will not vote for our final, um, our final vote for a superintendent until we have a full board. I'm not saying anybody said anything different, and you don't have to get excited. I'm saying, I see, I worried about that, and I'm saying, I absolutely won't do that.
I'm gonna respond to that. I think that the meeting on Sunday is gonna enable us to get to the cap finalists. And we have committed, we haven't voted to change that. Our process is, we will do the, after the initial and the finalists, I hear the new board members will be seated. So, if we keep delaying things, I don't know when everything's gonna happen.
Unfortunately, I haven't seen that in this meeting. I, the reason we, I can't talk about yesterday, but since certain people don't want to be flexible in any way and want things to exactly go their way, um, then we're gonna be at an impasse.
I think we're meeting, so we won't, yes, uh, go ahead, Gordon.
I'm, I'm trying to just stick on this amendment. So, and I, I'm not trying to convince anybody, I just wanna explain for myself. I think that we, I know that I originally wanted to have these people on before the twenty seventh so they could be part of the meeting on the twenty seventh. And I know we're all giving up a lot of time, and we'll have given up a lot of time, but I'm not comfortable moving it back, so I'm not gonna say what we, I mean, I'm trying to convince anybody, but I leave. I don't wanna cut off the debate, but otherwise I would like to call the question, because I feel like we're having more important discussions at once. So, if we can decide this one.
Can I just, can I say something about this?
Sure.
Some questions, Nicole.
If you, if you wanna say something, I'll.
Yeah, I would just like to clarify the reality. So, if we end up with six or seven interviews, we have a budget committee meeting and then interviews. That is gonna be another marathon night, and then we have one night to recover and then to vote. And I think that is not gonna work. Let me just be realistic about that. And so, I've been pushing back the interviews to the twenty seventh. I don't know, maybe we can do a special meeting to vote. I'm not saying we have to delay forever, but this is a really important decision, and, and I feel like we're hurrying it. And the way the process is to your worries, Laurel, it's not gonna happen that way. It's gonna be the way we laid it out, but we have two simultaneous big things going on. Just to.
I, I'll just, I'm sorry, I'll go ahead.
Sorry. I, I, I said it a few times already, and I'm just gonna say it again, that in life procrastination makes me really stressed out, and it's giving me a lot of anxiety every step of the way when we move it down. And, and it's, I, I feel like these are both very pressing issues. And I wouldn't vote to support pushing either of them down. I, I, I was, I was the one last night who wanted to stay longer, to finish. Um, I, I, I can't, um. If, if the obstacle of time is removed with Laurel saying she's not willing to come on Sunday, I think that sticking with the schedule, um, feels feels most responsible. We have so many things that have been pushed back. And it makes me really, it makes me really nervous. I, I think that operating this five, um, is not working for us. I feel, I feel like that's just really hurting us, and we have been doing really well for a few meetings there. And I don't want to go backwards further, and I feel as though there's a reason that someone, however many decades ago, sat down and said that this needs to be a body of seven. And I don't know if I've ever felt it more deeply than I am the last two days. Gordon.
I can wait, you can go first on that. Um, I guess I would, you know, I also think the timeline is important, because we interview seven people, then that's just two more that we had planned. I mean, and I could say, I would probably be okay saying, let's just take the threes, but the truth is, I think the reason we're doing twos and threes is that we have a, we have divergence or diversity of views and desires and visions and stuff, and that seems like the way forward is to cast like a bigger tent. It doesn't do that. And so, if the price we pay for that of being able to move forward together is to say, we have two more interviews on Monday, you know, I feel like we can handle that, and I guess just for me, it's the, it's the, the timeline is really important. So, I've not, I will call the question before we talk, but if anybody says, oh, here's something that might change my mind, okay, otherwise I would like to try to decide this and then go on.
Well, I guess to me, my decision whether to do it that way depends on whether we can meet on Sunday. Because I don't think we can manage, we'll have new people, they're, they're related. And we gotta get through that first round that we, we set to before we seat new people, because that is a huge, we're, that's just not gonna work to inject, inject people there to that stage of press.
What are we talking about? What are we talking about?
We're talking about both processes and they are related.
No.
Yes, they are.
We need to follow Robert's rules, because we're doing this illegally. We have to. Let's stay with what we're talking about.
I'm explaining my situation, so, okay, call the question.
Okay, I'm gonna have to call the question.
The question is, is your, it's a motion to delay.
And it's a motion to delay the, you said to move it for non-intending Wednesday?
Yeah. But, but, but wait, that's not finished though, because then when does the vote happen? You wanna wait a whole week for that or until the following Monday? And do we, you know, have.
Usually, usually, typically, we would give ourselves a week um, to do the, you know, the, the work on making this big decision.
Right.
And, and now we don't need to give ourselves. I was never comfortable with the fact that it was a day and a half in the first place.
It's too bad we didn't say that, but I, I think it's also different, I mean, have we, have, in, in, anyone here's history with four J, have two openings ever been open at the same time?
Well, I'm not sure how that plays in, it, it'd be curious, but I mean, um. I, I don't know.
Right.
Can I just say, I went back and listened to this meeting, because I was trying to figure out what the, the meeting on the thirty, if we're gonna be on this process, and I'm not trying to say this in a sharp way, and everybody can change their mind, but for whatever, maybe it's just funny, but you proposed that we vote on the same, like, review that. So, whatever, I don't intend to.
It wasn't.
I don't intend to.
I mean, it wasn't.
Okay.
It wasn't.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it means for tomorrow.
Oh, fair enough. I, so I call the question on Alicia's motion. Which I understand to be to adjourn on the twenty seventh and to decide on the.
To change the schedule.
Oh, second, yes.
To change the schedule.
Okay, so you call the question, I, um. Okay.
Next vote.
All those that want to move the, move it to, um, the twenty seventh where we do interviews, and then the vote on May second. Raise your hand. There's two yes votes, all those opposed, raise your hand. Three no votes, so the motion.
Does not pass.
Does not pass. No, yeah. Don't we need four votes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
It doesn't pass.
This is why we need more board members.
Okay, so now we're doing the, the twos and threes vote, ready?
Thanks, Gordon, I needed that.
Well, I felt.
I do, I was like. I do, I was like, what are we doing?
Okay, we're, we're.
And we're, we're each.
Four votes.
That's what I was gonna ask.
I'm first this time.
Oh.
Glad to be known.
Man, really show off.
Do you wanna go to show here? Here, you're going to show. Here, good. Alright, the votes have been received and in the sixth round. Gordon member Alicia Hayes cast votes for Deborah Daly. Jennifer Johnick. Kurt Heskey, Heskey and Kaufman and Carlos Seguera. Gordon late for cast votes for Tom DiNaverto, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson and Andrew Ross. Judy Newman for Daniel Patrick Isaacson, Jennifer Johnick. Kurt Heskey Kaufman and Carlos Seguera. Laurel Aurora. Cast votes for Deborah Daly, Tom DiNaverto, Thomas Hura and did not cast a fourth vote. Maya Wabasa cast votes for Tom DiNaverto, Thomas Hura, Daniel Patrick Isaacson and Andrew Ross. So the caliphs are two votes for Deborah Daly in the sixth round, three votes for Tom DiNaverto. Zero for Scott Kaufman, three for Thomas Hura, three for Daniel Patrick Isaacson, two for Jennifer Johnick. Two for Kurt Heskey Kaufman and two for Andrew Ross and two for Carlos Seguera, was there any? Sorry, was there any other that I?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, it's just this way.
Okay, so the plan is to move the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, we have nine candidates to move.
Okay.
Can you wait one second with that up, please?
Yes.
That's everyone, cool thing while we transition.
Sure.
I can apologize because we did it, but I did want to express sympathy to the staff who were forced to stay here so late. I mean, I'm glad we're not having this discussion, even like yet another hour of tiredness, but you all paid the price, so uh, sorry.
Well, we've whittled the rest of the agenda down to one item. Everything else we've decided to push off during the morning breaks, haven't we, two items? I thought, so the board could decide to move some items that are not necessarily due until next time. Yes, oh, do we have to vote on that? Okay, sorry, let's look at the, if we get your agenda out. And um, I can find my agenda. Okay. So um, after, after looking at this, we have, we can wait on the key, uh, I'm down for items for information. We can wait on the reported key performance indicators. Uh, the financial um report, we can wait, but we can't wait very long, but we could, at our next meeting, we have to act on it. Um, Andrea left, she did not feel well, so um, we can wait on the mental health committee. And um, we can wait on the policies, but we do need to have initial conversation so we can vote on the calendar. Cause that's pretty time pressing, so this is items for future action, so it's an opportunity that you have in your packet. To get some input because we'll be voting on it next time, because families are definitely um waiting to see the calendar. Yeah, so uh.
Are we voting on that?
No, we're voting after, we're giving input today, it's an item for future action, we're looking at it.
We're voting to change the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, sorry, yeah, I'm really tired, I apologize. We're voting to change the agenda to only, to remove everything else and only uh hear the item for future action on the calendar. That's the proposal, do I have a second? Gordon, any discussion? Laurel.
I would like to have a, a small discussion about the mental health committee because that is also timely. And cannot be pushed off, I, I, the, what I read that was proposed was not, was um. Not even close to what I was hoping it would be, so um I would like to at least have a discussion to say. Can it be more than that and sort of the.
So you wanna, you wanna propose an amendment to add an amendment, that's correct, I mean, that's correct.
I, okay, I propose an amendment to add that back to the agenda.
You have a second. Gordon, okay, there you go. Any discussion on adding or that, I do, you would.
Do you want me to talk about it now or?
Uh, no, I think we just vote on it and then we'll do the calendar and then we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, um, any discussion on the amendment?
I just feel like if any of that really got it, says there's some.
Okay, hear you Gordon.
Alright, let's.
It's better.
Okay.
Anything else? Any other discussion? Maya?
No.
Okay, then let's vote on the amendment, all those that are okay with leaving that on the, the agenda, raise your hand. Uh, five people say yes, so the amendment passes, so now we're gonna vote on the original motion. Which is to keep that on the agenda, the conversation, the item for. Information about the um mental health committee and then the um.
Calendar.
Calendar, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, passes five to zero. And now we'll ask Christine to come up and talk about the calendar, answer any questions, thank you.
Here, okay. Um, good evening, so I'm here to present the proposed calendars for um next school year. There are two of them, there's the elementary home schools and then the secondary school calendar. So state law requires that the board approve and adopt the annual academic calendar. These calendars are designed in collaboration with um the operations and instructional staff. And in addition, we consult with EEA concerning the calendar, we have done so in this case. Um, considerations include the uh construction minutes that were required to provide uh break periods. Um, for local employers including U O and L C C, requirements of labor contracts, holidays under state law and our own board policies. Next year, um, we are proposing a calendar that has the following features, um, the start date would be Sep- September seventh, this is the Wednesday after Labor Day. This is the traditional start date for most students. Um, Thursday, September eighth would be the start date for seventh and eighth graders. Um, that would allow the sixth graders to receive the orientation um on September seventh, so that's the difference there. June fifteenth will be the last date for students, um, and senior class day would be June ninth. Teachers would be reporting Au- um, August twenty sixth and all told, they would have a one hundred ninety-three day work year. That includes two extra professional development days at the beginning. There are, an, an additional change um that we're proposing this time is the addition or inclusion of two teacher workdays in lieu of two student construction days. And the, the purpose around that is to acknowledge the, the work that has continued to pile up as a result of the pandemic. And absences creating a substantial workload on teachers, so. That is the major change from what is really four J's traditional calendar. And now we see is there any other aspect? The, the other change that's a little different than the traditional four J calendar is the second Friday of October. Often those days have been non-contract, non-work days. To allow um some licensed staff members to go to professional development statewide. Um, but this year because of the way the calendars are, are following. We are proposing that we schedule that as a, as a work day, it would be a no school work day, but a work day nonetheless. We will be coming back, do you have any questions about the calendar?
Go ahead, go ahead. My only question is, was there anything that was controversial, disagreeing between your discussions with E A and not end this and so can you explain to us a little bit?
The, well, I, I think the, the lingering, I think discrepancy that I believe exists is. On the issue of the permanency of the two extra workdays that we've added in, so. It, you know, the district um has came forward and E A has, can you add two more essentially planning days embedded in the work year? And um, you know, the superintendent agreed to do that and to move that forward. However, it's not the intention to make that a permanent day because we have a number of uh workdays already. In any event, so, so there is an, an issue there that I, I think will maybe need to be addressed in the future. Doesn't, doesn't need to be on the table right now, but, but it does result in a, in a decrease in instruction days. So traditionally we have, if there is a little bit by, by level, but we traditionally have between a hundred and seventy and a hundred and seventy-two depending on the levels or a hundred and seventy-two point five. And so this actually reduces that by two days. Um, that's not something that um, that we recommend be permanently inscribing. We don't think it's particularly good for students to have a hundred and sixty-nine school days and um on a permanent basis. But these are really challenging times and at another time, we can go much more deep into. The kinds of workdays that we've, we've already got encountered, so that's part of the bigger conversation.
So just to make sure I understand, there's not controversy about this year, there's controversy about what continues on to this year?
Yes, I'll come. No, I, I, my understanding is E A very much supports these days and was very appreciative of the district. I, but I believe that they believe they should be on, on an ongoing basis, but um that isn't anything that we, you know. Would agree to do outside of our being, at least that's not what we would recommend, of course, it's more probably.
Thank you.
Maya?
I have um a question about those days, do they have their own nifty color so I can see where they are? And um, I'm also wondering, and, and I, this is what I understand, but I just wanna hear it out loud. These are days that are protected, no student days, there's not gonna be like a surprise P D on those days or they're not grading, they're just strictly. Similar to like the October eighteenth etcetera day we gave this year where it's protected for.
We have four, we have four in this year?
Right, but, but that's, that's, so my question is, they're protected, they won't, they won't change, is that correct?
Right, I mean, this is intended, excuse me, sorry. This is intended to be a teacher work day.
Okay.
That, that's, you know, that is not to say that it's purely uninterrupted time, I'm sure principals can go in and. Say hello or whatever, but it's intended as a, it is not intended to be a.
Okay.
Um, professional development, that was not the intent, we've added at some great expense. Two professional development days this year in addition to the normal calendar, so it is not the intent that that's professional development.
Yeah, I got it. Can you point out to me what, where, the.
Yeah.
I just don't know if they have their own, like I said, their own special color, which is what.
No.
Well, I look at the world.
One of them is March seventeenth.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, look at me Gordon. And the other one is uh December second.
So March seventeenth and December second, okay, and then um the only other thing, I was, I, I didn't mean to sound um like I was laughing at you. But you said that they were uh uninterrupted time and I, I, I know this is a mistake, but I just wanna call attention to it so it gets fixed. Um, the, in the October, it says two hours of interrupted planning and.
Oh.
That's why I gave you, because I looked down right when you said that and I was like.
Oh, wait, March sixth?
Uh, no, the October fourteenth day.
Wow, okay, yeah.
I didn't press, I didn't press.
Definitely, I appreciate.
On elementary.
On elementary.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
Teachers are the scare.
I, I was gonna say, I bet you that's controversial.
That one didn't come up.
And that's all I have.
Maybe it was a disruption of the vacation.
Thank you, I was Googling the Jewish holidays, which we missed completely, I, I didn't check that.
Wanna assure you that we looked at major ones.
I'm sure you did, but I just thought, I, I should have done my homework, yeah.
I don't think we actually do anymore, that's put into the process. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not making a joke, I think that's.
It is. Well.
Oh, okay.
The board still has a role in terms of setting the, the calendar, uh, we, staff will do our best to alert you if there's an issue that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, oh, uh, any other questions, everyone's good? Okay, then um, thank you Christine. Okay, uh, I'm gonna turn this over to the superintendents to talk about the mental health committee and then I know Laurel has some comments. Yes, so Laurel, I think that um maybe the disconnect is that um you were maybe thinking about a board. Of maybe, I'm not sure.
Maybe.
And this one, I decided that um because there wasn't very many days left and there was a lot of stuff on the agenda for board members. That we can get it started and then we could find two later, but get it started, invite the community, go through our process and um hopefully just start a conversation. Because I know how busy you all are, so I was just hoping to get some, well, the calendar and get it started. Laurel.
So I, I have to go find it, but, and so I don't have it, um, but it had, it, I forget what it was called. But it was basically, it was twice a year and, but I thought it was, had kind of a name. I will start this way, I was hoping for um. I don't think oversight is a bit strong of a term, but a, a committee that has the ability to say, this is what we know you have, this is what we, we have. Cause well, the people are in it, we expect to have, I don't think that will work with only having that twice a year. So I, I can understand that being more often, I'm not sure what works the best. I don't think twice a year would work, cause it basically would just be, to me, that sounds like a committee that just signs off, kind of like the budget committee when, before we mess with it. Um, so. If that is a, a board committee, um, cause everything else sounds right, it's made of, stop me if I'm wrong. It's made up of community members, um. It's made up of community members, students, staff. You know, stake, I'll just say the one word stakeholders. Everybody who is working on, wants to be part of this. But I really, and especially think it's important right now with everything that's going on, that we, this is happening at least, at least monthly, if not every other month. To, because we have a lot of work to do still. And as far as I know, we started reaching out to community, but I would just like that more of a formal process. And then, yeah, the board would love to hear from them. But mostly, and I think I said this, I mostly want them to inform staff what they, you know, after they look at this and say, this is what we think would be the best way to go forward. I don't know what all that is called. So I'm not going to pretend to know what it's all called. I know I need, it needs to be a lot more than, it seems like more of a suggestion than a tool right now. I want a real tool to help this problem.
So is that something you wanted to respond to or talk about superintendent? Or is that something the board wants to talk about? Any other comments about that?
Well, the oversight piece is, it's not policy, Laurel, so I don't. I want to hear the opinion of board members, but I'm not sure that a team of teachers and mental health therapists would. I guess I need more about, I think you said oversight's too strong of a word, but can you give a?
Well, oversight.
Advisory.
Yeah, I guess advisory maybe closer. It's not, what did you say, Judy?
Oh, I was gonna say, so help with advisory and group development ideas, kind of more idea.
Yeah, yeah, especially where we're at right now. I think it's twofold. It shows the community, we're very serious. I know we've been starting to do that. Community's starting to see that. But it also shows, we have actually set up structure around this. So this is not going away. And the other part is that they will have voice with staff instead of just being, you know, talking to each other. They can, I don't know, maybe generate something that you, that can be used as a tool. And if not absolutely everything needed, it really, I think it, I think it, the way I use things like this as somebody who's, if you have a group of stakeholders who are very invested in that, and believe me, you'll get people that are all in, they will be giving you great information that will only be useful. That's, and so it doesn't mean you have to do everything every time, but it does mean you have, you're not having to figure it all out.
Yeah, I think what I realized is we've done all this work and we have a lot of program happening and people don't know it. So I think what I was hoping is get out there, have people walk through our plan, which we showed you, but I don't know how many people see the work rapid and just walk through our plan and all of the services that we've been working on to add to it. Because I don't think we've done a great job of letting everyone know about it. After that, schools know about it, but not everyone else. That's what I was hoping to do in the first couple meetings. And certainly, I think we would meet more often until we got it out there. And then it doesn't have to be twice a year. That was just, you know, a number. And I think that the team, and my team, I mean, Lynn Cantico, El, O B J, all the people that helped us build what we've built has done a great job together. So not just 4J, but the whole community that's worked together with us.
So is that, are you gonna, you have the committee in mind that's going to convene, is that right?
We're gonna invite, we're gonna.
We're gonna invite, okay.
Blast it out there, invite anyone who wants to come. And then we'll walk through all of the pieces that we have. I am sure that people have great ideas that we haven't incorporated yet. And so that's where I think Laurel is absolutely correct. And then there will be pieces, I think, that, that people will want that maybe we can't do. I don't know what that is yet, but.
So maybe the first step is to convene the meeting and then be sure we get a report back to the board. Maya.
I'm, I think someone can give me a little lesson. I'm wondering what the difference is between a superintendent's committee, a board's committee, and we have discussed maybe it being similar to the equity committee, which is advisory to both. And I'm just wondering what the, what changes with that language in terms of the functionality of the group and in terms of the players? And then my second question is, is this an ad hoc committee or are we creating a permanent committee that will be ongoing forever until mental health crises are no longer existing?
So if it's a superintendent's committee, it reports to me. If it's a board committee, it reports to the board. I'm not seeing one like our current equity, you know, that we're creating that reports to both. So. Oh, Christine wants?
I would, I would probably recommend against having a joint committee at this point, just because it's a really, it raises novel issues that have not been addressed yet. Among other things, public meetings law applies to any board subcommittee. And so when we have a superintendent committee, the public meetings law doesn't apply to that. And so it really creates a different set of requirements in terms of, you know, location, notice, agendas, minutes, and record keeping. So I would recommend a dual one like we have. And I think O D E is in the process of developing rules about some of that, but that's, it was a pretty novel invention of that statute that was just passed.
Laurel.
Is any committee that reports to the board at all a, it can't go, they're not all board committees, right? Because we have all kinds of people on the board.
It's a direct report. Not just report like coming to us, but a direct committee of the board.
So, yeah, so I'm thinking, and I'm thinking kind of a hybrid. Like it's mostly a superintendent's committee and then there, like if we want an update of what's going on or, or it can be, I don't know, maybe this isn't legal, but like when I go, like we're on all different things. And if I'm on this, then I could come back in it and report to the board during my time.
Yeah, I think we can definitely ask the superintendent to report back. And maybe as it gets going, we could say, it could be a committee. She said it would be great to have the board, you know, have, send a board rep like we do to other. All right.
Great. Can I just double back on the second question I have, which is, is this an ad hoc committee or is this a forever?
Well, I guess it's a forever committee because we'll have, well, as long as we have that department. So I created that department about, right, when the, right when the pandemic hit, right at the beginning, we realized we needed more support. So mental health wraparound and all of that. So I believe it's funded and I believe it's going to be there. But I have this conversation with Gordon. If we had a budget cut and it's not there, then I might not have anything to report.
But it's not just a meeting of that depart.
No.
No, so what I want to know is like whether that department disappears, will there still be a committee that is looking at mental health?
Oh, sure.
Actresses.
There could be, yeah.
Okay, so it's not an ad hoc committee? It's a.
Yeah.
It's a clean old committee.
Okay.
Okay. You're good. And I'm going to say we're going to adjourn this meeting at 10:24.
Oh, yeah, we're supposed to ask what to ask, what to ask. It's okay.
Well, we ended the agenda and that's all we left on. They told you already.
I do.
We may have to meet with.
No. No. Because it's not a regular scheduled meeting, so you can't make conversation without. Nope.
I don't want to, Laurel.
No, that's, no, what you're doing right now is bullying. That's not appropriate.
My problem solving.
No, you're saying I may have to meet without you.
Yes.
No, it's not a regular scheduled meeting. You can't say. We may have to do it. That's bullying. We had all night to problem solve.
So we need to figure that out. Then we're going to lose people.
Well, that's what I was hoping.
Yeah, I mean, we are.
I know, that's why I was just hoping we could have a conversation while we, wow, we're all here.
I don't know.
That's great, well, the three of you guys.
If you're deliberating, we have to. Are we adjourned? Are we deliberating?
No, we're have to deliberate.